Good morning and welcome to the October 3, 2019 Business Meeting. And first, I'd like to welcome Paul Reynolds. Thank you. I was thinking about you today, or many times, how you volunteered to do this job, come in here for a short time, and leave. So I just want to make sure, recognize your volunteerism.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. And Gary, would you please take the role?
Yes, Commissioners, our staff support today is County Council Stephen Madcor, Clerk to the Board Mary Rathke, Role Call Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
First thing I always do is look up and see if the eagle is looking the right way. Because some, well, years ago, somebody noticed that.
Mackwoods.
Who?
Mackwoods.
Mackwoods did. So, so he had some impact on me, because I look every time. With that, we're going to announce that the Board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority. And again, our Housing Authority Representative, Paul Reynolds, is here. So with that, Gary, what are we doing?
First is a Housing Authority Discussion Item, Approval of the Hillside Park Master Plan Design Concept. Stephen McMurty, Housing Development Director, will present.
Good morning. Chair Bernard and Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. I'm Stephen McMurtry. I'm the Director of Housing Development for the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. And we're here to discuss the Hillside Park Master Plan Design Concept. And our request is that the Board approve the Hillside Mark Plan Design Concept, so that we can move forward with our land use proceedings and the next steps for the project. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? We had a policy session to review this, just this week, and you guys have been working on it a long time. And I guess my question is, is the community in support of, in general, of this plan?
I believe the community is, in general, in support of this plan. We've gone through a tremendous amount of community outreach and engagement, over a year now, and we're very excited about it, and I believe, by and large, they are as well.
Okay. I don't see a lot of people here to testify in opposition of it, so, all right. So with that, okay, so this is you. Go ahead, Sonny.
Yeah, I just want to just comment on how much I appreciate the variety of components of this plan. Oh, I'm getting waved at because my microphone wasn't on. So, thank you, I saw that. Now the microphone is on. I want to say, I really appreciate all the diverse elements of this plan, and the types of housing, and the interest in creating a diverse community, as far as having some commercial, and also having some mixed income, some mixed use, and the open spaces, the walkability, the thoughtfulness that went into all of the components, and the trees, having more trees, so that we have fresher air, and all of those components. The one thing that I want to emphasize, so my daughter just bought a brand-new house, and I went over to it last night, because I was babysitting my grandchildren, took them home, and it's like, oh, man, why do they build these brand-new houses with these barriers for accessibility? Just, it was only one step. But it's like, why? Why did they do that? Why don't we have design standards that will make it easier for the house, or the property, to have longevity for whoever lives in it, with whatever mobility challenges may come? So I just want to put that plug in. I know that all of the design has not been done, but for wherever possible, to have these housing units be accessible for people that may have, be on crutches, may use a walker, may use a mobility device, just wherever possible, let's reduce steps where possible. If we're creating, we're creating it new, so just wanted to do that advocacy while I got you here captive. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mary, I probably need name tags on here, otherwise.
I wrote that down.
I gotta count them. The only other thing is, and I know we're not into the design part, does County Code require sprinklers?
We will, in almost all cases, yes. There will be, and the City of Milwaukee also will require that there will be sprinkled buildings, in almost all cases. And that's something that even if they're not, it is becoming more and more prudent a use to put in, in all building types. And I did, I want to just quickly, on that note, because we're talking about next steps, I did want to also remind the Commissioners that, you know, we'll have another opportunity to roll this master plan out, should you decide to accept it, to the residents of Hillside Park and Hillside Manor, the neighbors that are associated with it in the City of Milwaukee, again, hopefully later on this fall, and we'd love for you to be a part of that.
Yeah, the, this has been a longtime project of interest. I was mayor at the time the county at first rolled it out, and I just want, I think the communication's been a lot better.
Thank you.
It was a challenge back then, and I'm excited to have it move forward. There's a great opportunity with the Metro Bond money to do a project that the community will appreciate. And, and our goal of building mixed-income housing, this accommodates that goal in certainly much closer than anything else we've ever done. So, thank you for your hard work, and yours too, Jill. And with that, I'll announce that the discussion, I am asked if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Come on up, both of you, come on up.
Give your names for the rest of the.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in Gladstone. And I do approve of this, and this is the, this is the result, I think, of a much more involved and robust process involving the people that live in the neighborhood, and the people that are going to live next to what will be built. And I think initially, sometimes government says, well, this isn't going to work here, we can't make this property redevelop, and we sell it. I see property sold, and down the road, then, we're looking for property. And right now, the cost of property is very high, so what you're doing here is paramount, because the one resistance you're going to get, and the one concern many have, is, are we going to end up with units that are $469 a square foot, or $700 a square foot? You know, how do we get there? So I think that, back to the subject, not to get too far in the weeds here, I think that, that this is a better outcome than what we were looking at a year ago. And I think that it was the involvement of the community, and the county, when I say county, I mean your housing, trying to fit this into a, into a scenario where they can make it work, make it affordable, and, and deal with the fact that this barely stretches the surface. So I do support this, and most importantly, what I'm really trying to say is, I think the way we got here is a model that needs to be followed everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, that brings up a point that I wanted to make, and that is, you know, the Northwest Housing Project ended up being a hundred and eighty thousand a square foot, I mean, yeah, no, a unit. And any, the closer we can get to something like that, and that's all design, and at this point, we have an opportunity to do that, design projects that align the sewer, and the bathrooms, and the laundry room, and the kitchen, and stuff like that, as much as possible. So, thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Clerk Locke, Clackamas Conservation District, and also comments on my own, and this is one that's way out on the fringes, in the stars, so to speak, in that I'd like to say something that just came to mind with this development, is dark skies ordinances for the, for the city. And I don't know, I haven't talked to the planning person, or anything like that, just sort of this, but that's something that you might want to consider in, in all of the developments that, that occur, because of course, not only for wildlife, but just for livability, and being able to sometimes see the stars, instead of just city lights. So there's, there is a dark skies society that has engineered plans or suggestions on alleviating what we call light pollution.
Yeah, that's a good point, and, and that's something we should look at. I know that Villebois had a dark sky requirement, so, and their street lighting, they're caps, so they don't.
Yeah, and we need to have the lighting for security, and that type of thing, but it's just a little thing that makes, makes our planet more livable. So I never even thought I would comment today, but this came up. Thank you.
Good point. Thanks for bringing that up. All right, with that, I'll ask for a motion.
I move to approve the Housing Authority Hillside Park Master Plan Design Concept.
Second.
Been moved and seconded and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much for your comments, and thank you for your work, and your work, and thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'll announce that we'll adjourn as the Housing Authority Board, and we convene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And strangely enough, the last two people who were up, come on up. Les? Oh, no, no, you're not up. So Charles. Charles, come on up. And Les, you're up first.
Good. Oh, just a quick heads up for you. Typically, in most cities or jurisdictions, if you add a third story to a building, you got to put sprinklers in it. And I'm not speaking as the authority, because I'm not, but just as a rule, that third story means it's time for sprinklers. So, Les Poole, Gladstone, have, have many of the folks been following what's going on with the Multnomah Neighborhood Association in Portland?
Multnomah Neighborhood?
As someone that understands.
Portland, was it?
Just all of Portland Neighborhood.
No, the Multnomah Neighborhood.
No.
In southwest.
So tell us.
Well, when the resistance came to running light rail through Tiger Down 99W, Triment started looking at different places to go with light rail, and they considered even running up tunnels up in that neighborhood. Anyway, in all of this, the bottom line is that, like so, within other areas, it's being redeveloped, but it's a very constrained environment, it's very traditional, and we're getting the five-story version, instead of the three-story version of redevelopment. And the infill is creating so many impacts, that the Neighborhood Association has fought back, they've legally challenged the city's comprehensive plan, and now they're in a Luba appeal. They're actually, you know, they lost at the city level, but it's at Luba. But whether they win or lose, there's a message there, and that is, certainly, we're going to look closer together, but some of the infill, and some of the pressures on land that are exacerbated by mismanagement of the growth boundary, and frankly, I believe, mismanaged by folks that are preoccupied with getting out of, getting us out of our cars. So my message to you is that, please watch what's going on in Multnomah, because there's a big message from of all places, Portland, that resonates much, much louder here in Clackamas County. So the other thing I wanted to mention is that recently, a housing or homeless emergency was declared by the county, or by the Health Department, or the county, is that in effect? I'm just curious. And was it a, my question is, did they declare a houseless emergency, or a homeless emergency? And, and have we, I'm just curious about that. And what's the difference, if you got a 30-second answer?
Yeah. So we did renew the housing emergency declaration, and that allows flexibility for our staff, and especially during the winter months, when it's really, really cold, and to set up those shelters, to be able to do those nimbly and quickly, and be able to respond for the public health urgency of it. So we are operating under that emergency still.
So we just extended the one from a year earlier?
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Skip.
Good morning, Commissioner Bernard, Commission Chair Bernard. My name is Charles Armspay. I live in Portland, Oregon, with a mailing, I live in Clack, Lake Oswego Urban Growth Management Area, Clackamas County Tax Lot, City of Portland address, and.
Who are you?
Jack of all trades, master of none. I've told that too many times. I'm here by myself today, for the first time. I'm not worried about a certain individual, my mother, deceased August 14, 2019, August 14, 0400 hours. She was age 105. And I came here today to thank the Commission for sending her this birthday card, about two weeks before she passed, and signing it, and taking the time to sign it. And I just, that's basically what I'm here. Put in context her life on Birds Hill Road, at 170, southwest Birds Hill Road, Portland, Oregon, 97219-8502. She moved in literally at her 38th birthday in 1952, with two, and came out first time by plane, a Boeing Stratocruiser, which sort of looked like a B-29, and then moved the family out from Port here in Michigan by train. And in those days, Twiliger Boulevard, Clackamas County Road, did not connect with State Street. Also, there was an interurban service to, between Portland and, and Oregon City, via the, what's now the, was it the Trolley Trail, Thelma Hagen Miller's territory. And so there's been a slight amount of change in our area in our lifetime. But again, I thank you for the card, and the time that you took to sign it and pass it on. And some of the other projects you've got going here, there's a lot of favors I'd ask, but the big one is, for Americans with Disabilities Act, there's two components to it. And you mentioned what stairs? I became an expert bridge layer. Get her out of the house. Fortunately, we remodeled circa 1980. Traversed with an eight-foot ramp, down three steps, and then get her out to the carport, another three-foot ramp. Foldable, thank heavens, but you know, you don't carry those things around. So that is the issue of accessibility to a structure. Then there's the component of mobility. And I don't think the governments are doing a very good job on that, in connecting things up, between a home and the structure here, for example, in this complex. So that has to be addressed, and I'd like to get, in this year's budget, means of developing infographics to describe what I call the physics, so everybody knows what the clearances are for wheelchair getting on a Triment bus. Dumb little things like that. Turn radius, and most important to me, percent slope. How, what can, what I affectionately called, labeled myself as a hippie, human power element, how far, what slope can they push you up? And so you understand that, when people come before you, like on this little bridge project, Oak Grove, the Lake Oswego, you understand what my issues are on that, and that is a biggie. So, again, thank you for the card, and I'll be talking with you later, probably this week. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we're moving on to the consent agenda. I'll ask the Clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, Approval of a Subrecipient Agreement with the In True Home and the Community Development Division for Emergency Solution Grant Funding for the Rapid Re-Housing Services. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Housing and Community Development Division and the City of Sandy for the ADA Sidewalk Improvements. Approval of a Revenue Grant Agreement with the State of Oregon Early Learning Division for Kindergarten Readiness Partnership and Innovation Program. Approval of an Agreement Number 9335 to the Revenue Agreement with Moda Health Plan for Provider Services to Members Enrolled with Health Benefit Plans. Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Central City Concern for the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. Approval of an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission to Provide Mental Health Court Services. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, Approval of an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with Metro for the Regional Travel Option Grant for a Safe Route to School Program Coordinator. Approval of an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement and Acceptance of a Grant Award for the Regional Travel Option Grant for the Bicycle Parking in Oak Grove. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. Under Technology Services, Approval of a Service Level Agreement, Amendment Number Five, Between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and LS Networks for a New Dark Fiber Connection. And Water Environment Services, Approval of a Personal Services Contract with Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership to Provide Watershed Health Education Support Services. That concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Commission for pulling the first one for discussion about the, the plan, Hillside Park redevelopment. Thank you. Secondly, I'll ask, is any member would like to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda for discussion or comment? Seeing none, you have a comment?
Well, possibly. It appears to me that two of them are the same.
Yeah, so number seven is the same as number five. Sorry about that.
Okay, so as long as we're aware that we're not doing.
It's one item.
Doing that twice. And then, I just wanted to say a couple things about the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program, which is a very promising effort to really prevent greater harm, as far as getting folks with drug challenges connected to services. And so far, the anecdotal information that I have has been very successful. It's a new program, and we have 70 participants now, with the lead program, and two lead case managers that actually have lived life experience, highly effective. And these efforts that we do, that we just approve on the consent agenda, are so significant to the health, welfare, and safety of our county, I just wanted to call it out.
Great, thank you very much. With that, all those in favor, say aye.
For any of order, Mr. Chairman, there's not a motion on the floor.
Oh, that would be helpful, wouldn't it?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's moved and seconded and seconded. That we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. With that, we'll move on to County Administrator Updates.
Yes, Commissioners, I'd like to share with you some good news happening here with our staff at Clackamas County. First, Water Environment Services sponsored the Summer Waterway Cleanup Series, which many of you participated in last month. It resulted in 1,700 volunteers removing 11,000 pounds of trash from local waterways in natural areas. So this is statewide, actually, I believe, not just here in the county. This was a 30% increase from last year's trash removal total. This was within the county, I'm sorry. So thanks to West and our program sponsor, Solve, for this excellent service. Next, our Public and Government Affairs Department received an honor from the National Association of Government Web Professionals, which is a group dedicated to sharing knowledge, best practices, and innovative ideas among website operators. The county received a Pinnacle Award for the Best Overall Website Presence, which factors aspects such as content, organization, design, and accessibility. We also received the Members' Choice Award. So thank you to Public and Government Affairs and Technology Services for our county website. Finally, I want to recognize the Sheriff's Department for two outstanding efforts they recently undertook. First, it's the one-year anniversary of when our sheriff's team saved a seven-day-old baby from, who had stopped breathing, breathing at the Clackamas Town Center. Our deputies were there. Due to their quick actions and collaborative efforts, that young baby survived and is doing quite well today. So thank you to our sheriff's team for being there when they were needed, as they always are. Second, a couple of sheriff's deputies were having a challenging day on the job, and a group of kids came up to them and gave them hugs, to thank them for all the work they do. And so our deputies were so moved that they chose to buy bicycles for those kids, who their bicycles were recently stolen, and they had no bicycles. And our sheriff's deputies did that out of the kindness of their hearts. So thank you to Deputies Mark Nicolai and Steve Funk, who chipped in to buy those bikes out of their own pockets for those kids, and they are going to be recognized in People Magazine in November. Further outstanding work that's been recognized nationally. So thank you to our sheriff's deputies and the fine work at our sheriff's team.
Wow.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Great, thank you. With that, we'll move on to Commissioner Communication, and Commissioner Schrader, you're up first.
Yeah, I just wanted to share a few things, and things I've been doing. One announcement is that Senator Merkley will be visiting the Manufacturing Day at Clackamas Community College. He'll be visiting their industrial tech center at 1:00, and during that morning, they're going to be having youngsters from Oregon City, who have access to that program, having lunch there, and they'll be having a tour with the, with the senator. And I got, was invited largely because I do serve on our local workforce board. And one of the other initiatives we've been working on, to help families, and particularly to help people move out of poverty and be prosperous, one of the key things that the data shows that working families have a problem with is increased cost of childcare. So we will be working, we have a meeting in Sandy, we'll be working with the school district, and some of the other folks up there, to take a look at how we can really get childcare to people, how can we reduce the cost, how can we help those barrier families who, who can get to work and be prosperous, but they actually need that key piece of childcare. So that's going to be an initiative we're actually going to be working on as a workforce board. The other thing is, I did notice, number four in our consent agenda, was approval of Revenue Grant Agreement with the State of Oregon Earning Learning Division for Kindergarten Readiness Partnership and Innovation Program. That is the other piece that good childcare provides as well. It's getting kids in those early years, when their brains are developing, when they can have appropriate food, when they can have appropriate stimulation, reading programs, education, play, that will really, really help them be successful later in, in life. And the whole purpose is to strengthen the collaboration between early care and the education sector. So we are working on that, and truly, it is a large workforce issue for a great number of people here in our county. So if everybody wants to meet Senator Merkley at Clackamas Community College at 1:00, he's going to be there, touring that center. I am going to be going to the Friends of Timberline event this weekend. As you know, Timberline is one of our major ski areas. Commissioner Bernard and I actually visited Mount Hood Meadows, too, as well. We have a real ski, kind of a recreation cluster up there, and they want to continue to talk to us of what that might mean for government camp, what that might mean to support that recreation industry up there on the mountain. So, Jim, I've been going to the mountain twice in one week, that's going to be really something. I think we all attended the Harvesting of Hope luncheon this week. There are. There were a number of us at Mary Gutrot, who was a dear friend to all of us, had her celebration of life, and it was really a fantastic event. Right in the middle of the talk, a ray of sunshine, I think, came through, and we could see it. And then after it was over, wow, there was a big thunderstorm, there was hail, and I always thought, maybe that was Mary. Yeah, I was driving.
What'd they do?
Well, they didn't. I had already kind of gotten in my car, and I was thinking, what are they doing? But all I could think of is that Mary was saying her goodbyes in quite the style that she always exhibited for most of us. And I personally miss her very much, because I was a new commissioner, I didn't know, didn't know anything. And she took me under her wing and really helped me be a better commissioner. And I spent many times with her at the Association of Oregon County meetings, just usually having a drink of wine. We both, Mary and I, like our wine. So I will miss her very much, as I know my colleagues will miss her very much. Finally, we had a District Eight meeting on behalf of the Association of Oregon Counties. District Eight includes Washington, Multnomah and Clackamas County. We had a tour of their facilities, their health facilities, how they are providing for people down there who have mental health needs, behavioral needs and primary care access needs. It was really, really a useful conversation. I'm serving as the Association of Oregon County President for the next few months. I'll be done in January. But we had a really, I think, good discussion about what our role is in the Association of Oregon County as a district, what that governance looks like, and what we can do to improve our relationships with our other counties, rural, urban, suburban across the state. So that was really good. So let me go to the word of the week first, Mary. Do that. Courage. Mental or moral strength to venture, persevere and withstand danger, fear or difficulty. Success is not final. Failure is not fatal. It is the courage to continue that counts. Winston Churchill. Okay, arts and culture activities in the county? Okay, Westland Library Music and the Stax, Saturday, October 5th, from 2:30 to 3:30 at the Westland Library. Neftal Riviera and Trio Boracas capture the essence of Puerto Rican, Cuban and Afro-Caribbean rhythms, bringing their passion for their heritage, music and culture to the audience. Milwaukee First Friday Poetry Reading and Open Mic, Friday, October 4th, 6:00 to 7:30 at Saint John the Evangelist Church in Milwaukee. The Milwaukee Poetry Season Series of the Litting Library of Milwaukee and Saint John the Evangelist are delighted to continue this season of First Friday Poetry Readings for 2019 on every first Friday from May to October. I was there reading my poems, poems at the first series, I was invited to go, and lo and behold, Emmett was there, our own Emmett Wheatfall. He's got a big party today, we're all going to go to, was reading his poems. And finally, the Rocky Horror Show is going at Lakewood Theater from September 6th to October 13th, and the next play will be Shakespeare in Love. And Clackamas Repertory Theater is, got a new play, never been seen before, really just is fantastic, and it's called Queen's Girl in the World. And I always want to know from Sonia what Kirk is doing, because he did, he did Westside Story.
He's getting ready to open October 11th, Westside Story, the Winningstad Theater downtown Portland, and we are housing three actors and a choreographer from out of town at the moment.
Great.
You know it has, really, it's really kind of fun. It's really, really fun to have those folks staying with us at our house. And they're gone at rehearsal all evening, and then I'm gone all day, so I only really get to see them Sunday morning brunch.
Oh, no. Well, if you ever need any more room, let me know.
Absolutely, it's quite a gift to
It's kind of fun.
To get to know these artists, they're fascinating, for sure. Thank you.
Ken, are you done? Martha?
Mm-hmm.
Ken?
Martha, when I went to the Hood River Labor Event, I met a lady that does childcare, works on childcare issues. I've given the information to Kimberly. I asked you to contact her for that information. There may be some synergy there that would be helpful. I attended the Parrot Creek Thank You Event this week, the McCall, Tom McCall Thousand Friends Gala and fundraiser. The Malala Community Event and Apple Festival, which was fun, and they had a car show. I wasn't able to enter it, but it was always good to see the cars, as everybody knows. Went to Clark's Grange for breakfast. It was a fundraiser for the Malala High School Choir. The Grange there, they do a lot of fundraising for schoolkids, for scholarships and travel events, like the choir, because the choir is going to be competing nationally, and they have to raise the money to get their transportation paid for. So it was well worthwhile going, and I'll tell you, if you ever get a chance to go to one of their breakfasts, go, because they make the best omelets going, bar none. And then yesterday, I took a tour of the BLM land and met the staff that work and run the Bureau of Land Management Properties here in Clackamas County. Also was there with the people who are doing the fish restoration on the Sandy River. That was quite interesting. They've done an incredible job of almost overnight having the recovery of three of the four species of salmon. It's incredible how fast they come back when the stream restoration projects are done and done properly. And then one of the things they talked about that I want to share with people that I think is important is the mandate that BLM has for the use of the lands that are currently in Clackamas County and throughout the state and the country. Only twenty percent of about one hundred and forty-one thousand acres of land that they have in this region is eligible for harvesting. They are required by law to manage the property for mixed use. And what that means is it's for recreation, for species preservation, for fish recovery and the harvesting of timber. And in that one hundred and forty-one thousand acres, only twenty percent is allowed for harvesting. And of that, they harvest one percent, which was about six hundred and some odd acres this last time around. So, and they do it in very sustainable ways, making sure that fish cover over, or tree cover over fish streams, et cetera, are maintained to keep the water temperatures down for fish recovery and for fish breeding. They really do work very hard to balance these mixed uses and still be able to provide the wood that we need to build our buildings and the homes that we live in. I would encourage people to go out there, meet them, get tours of the facilities that they have out there, from the bicycle. We have a off-road bicycle trail in some of the BLM land that is one of the top ten in the world, one of the top three in the nation. The people come from all over the world to ride their mountain bikes on those trails. And yet, when you're there, you would hardly even know that the trails were there. So I would encourage people to take a look at the recreational opportunities and also how they do the harvesting and how they do it responsibly and sustainably in, here in Clackamas County and around the country. And on that note, I will go to the dogs. And today it is a plural.
Oh, gosh.
And today it is a plural. Introducing Zoe and Tucker. They are brother and sister and are looking for a forever retirement home together. Zoe is a ten-year-old husky, German Shepherd mix, who can be a little shy at first, but with patience and treats, you will see that she can be a good friend. She likes to go for walks, hang out with Tucker in the yard and loves a soft bed for a nap. Tucker is a twelve-year-old fellow who likes to go for walks, hanging out in the shade with his sister Zoe, and likes to nap in comfort and style on cozy beds. He also thinks that treats are pretty fantastic. A leisurely stroll around the neighborhood every day would be great. He and Zoe take good care of their toys and bed here at the shelter. If you think you have the perfect retirement home for Tucker and Zoe, please come and meet them today. For more information about Zoe and Tucker or any other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at (503) 655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chair Bernard. Wow, we have all been so busy. It always makes me just like to take a little bit of a sigh as many of the Commissioners go through their busy, busy weeks. And it's really been something. But today, I just want to focus on one event that Chair Bernard and I attended, which was the Legal Empowerment Accelerator Program, which is LEAP. You know, I talked about LEAD, which is the Law Enforcement Diversion. This is the Legal Empowerment Accelerator Program. Between leaps and leads, we've got a lot of acronyms going on. But this program is a way to help reduce domestic violence. It is a connection for new attorneys to be connected with survivors of domestic violence so that they can get the legal services that they need to successfully transition to a life of safety. I was really impressed with the launch event that was at Villa Catalana, which is one of our county's most beautiful wineries here locally, just right here in Oregon City. I was very impressed with how this program got started, because it was really board-generated. Members of their board thought this is a very important part of the continuum for safety. And what's so exciting for me, as an attorney who has practiced family law, I've had the incredible honor and privilege of helping to transition people to lives of safety as an attorney. When I was working as a case manager, social worker, early in my career from Multnomah County, I saw the repeated cycle of people not able to escape those relationships, going back to those relationships and really seeing the struggle. One of the key areas where it's so hard is lack of legal services. So this will provide a very, very important link. And I also want to highlight another theme that both Commissioner Humbiston and Commissioner Schrader mentioned, which is childcare. The cost of childcare is very prohibitive to people that are trying to get on their feet and rise economically. It's a real barrier. There are going to be efforts that we're going to see more of from our elected leaders at the state and efforts happening here locally to really focus on that issue. It's a really important element for, to help us with one of our key goals, which is to really reduce domestic violence and encourage safety, one of our key strategic initiatives. So with that, I will pass it back to, I guess it's
Well, thank you. I wanted just to acknowledge the lot of the volunteers who have worked on the libraries. We have a lot of library committees currently that are working on a project, and last night was no different. Commissioner Schrader and I, a couple Mondays ago, attended another one. But it's really great to see a lot of people that are very passionate about libraries. And a lot of the folks are my age and older. You know, there's a few that are younger, but we're doing it on behalf of really the younger generations, actually. And they seem to be kind of somewhat left out of a lot of representation on a number of things that we do in the county. But they're busy, you know? I think children and parents are busy raising their kids and trying to move their kids around, going to, whether it's school, or going to the doctor, or going to soccer practice, or a number of things. It's about mobility. And when we were talking earlier about mobility, as far as the folks that are, have, are disabled, the ADA mobility issues that were, we touched on earlier, got into a really passionate discussion a couple Wednesday mornings ago. Commissioner Bernard was there when, you know, one of our local leaders, who's very passionate about bike, bike usage and thinks that a lot of people should get on bikes, I guess I was, got a little bit concerned, because a lot of people can't really get on a bike. You know, I rode a bike a lot, still try to ride my bike when I can, but I got to take it in steps, because it takes me about two or three weeks for my need to recover from riding my bike. But you know, when we're moving our families around, and we have to realize that there's just, mobility means so many different things. It's safe access, it's access for people who have, who are disabled, who need, you know, a way to move from one to, for thirty-six inches of grade, be able to move from their porch, or what it may be, or a barrier at a facility that they need to access. It came roost to some degree when a number of folks I know that were trying to honor the boycott, happened to be this local issue with the grocery stores. And a lot of people don't have choices, because they don't have an ability to be mobile. And talking to a number of folks at alternative stores, and my wife does a lot of the shopping, and so she's, you know, she's a, you know, we're echoing and hearing a number of the issues about, how do we move in this region? And as we talk about transportation, I think there are a lot of people that are in areas of the region that have a number of alternatives, a number of choices, and we don't have that same level here. Or maybe folks don't realize the needs, but I think the forgotten folks, I think, are the senior citizens. The forgotten folks are the youth that don't have access. And I think the forgotten folks are often not in the core hub of the metro region, and they're on the periphery. And a lot of those factor in the Clackamas County. We have probably the highest population of senior citizens per capita than any of the other counties, or not the only one, however. But we've got to look at our demographic, we've got to realize who we're serving, and that not all, the answer for everyone is not, not bikes, not bicycles. Certainly, it's a component, it's embedded in our plans, we're doing everything we can. But I did really want to just acknowledge that all the volunteers are doing everything they can, but not necessarily because they're sixty-five years old doesn't mean that they're not trying to represent the need for youth and all the other things that we do, all the other volunteers. You know, we happen to be available, as we get older, we have access, we have the time, but we just don't have that representation, I think that's, you know, from those people themselves. Last night, a very passionate young lady, I call her young, she's probably in her thirties, I met her last night at a meeting, and she was very passionate about what's happening in her neighborhood, happens to live very, very close to the Park Avenue area, and very concerned about the health and welfare and safety of her family and what's happening on her street, and seeing things, as she, used the words, a number of the values are being decimated. She's new to the area and moved to the area, but was kind of shocked to see some of the negative impacts. Reached out to the local sheriff, or our sheriff, on some local issues that are happening in our area, but there's a lot of concerns. Met with the lady on Monday, this Monday, who lives in the area, and she's just very, very concerned about the increasing number of homeless people and the impacts of that. So we have a, we have a lot of good news stories, and sometimes we have some not-so-good stories. But we're trying to cope the best we can with the limited resources, and I think it's just imperative that we recognize and look through the lens of how we, how, what, how what we do impacts all different populations, senior citizens, those that are disabled, those that are not, youth, how they move around and folks. So I think we need to be mindful of all those needs on everything that we do in a time of very scarce resources, and I'll talk about that one at another meeting.
Okay, thanks. And I believe I missed last week's meeting, so I don't know if you guys, oh yeah, I called in.
Yeah, we remember.
You're Charlie Brown.
Yeah, that's what, I was told. So, and I don't know if you mentioned our meeting with the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ram.
Yes, we did.
You did. So we've met here with them and there with them, and it's the first time any commission's ever met with the tribes. Now we are reaching out to the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs, because they actually have a piece of the, of their lands within Clackamas County, a very small piece, which you'll see when you go to the conference in Bend. You'll see the sign. So I'm looking forward to that. I think one thing you mentioned, and it's something that is a priority for me, is if we're going to be spending money on McLaughlin, the parking structure and a bathroom is really important. So we need to really work on that. And those folks should come to that meeting, the metro meeting, and perhaps testify about the challenges they have on Park Avenue. I know that's just one of them.
I understand, understand they're somewhat being discouraged because of the lack of opportunity and time allotted for that.
It is very true. One meeting took an hour and a half, and that didn't leave much for the rest of the meeting. The other thing you mentioned, childcare, you know, one of my goals here on campus is to offer childcare to people getting services here. And that's not And that's not, I mean, we need to do that at, at no cost to the county. So, we need to figure out in the future, when we do our courthouse, you know, will parents have an opportunity to drop kids off? Will employees who work here have an opportunity to drop kids off? And, and people who are across the street at our Family Justice Center, is there an opportunity to drop kids off? They do provide some childcare there now. And then, you mentioned species of salmon on the Sandy. We had an opportunity to go up there. I got to correct you on one thing. There's only one species of salmon that goes up in the Pacific Northwest. There are all types of salmon, coho, and I looked it up, because I, I was wondering, because on the Atlantic coast, there, they are different species. They don't lay eggs and die.
So, I stand corrected, it's not species, it's types?
Yeah, I just.
Fair enough.
And then, I, I just meant, wanted to mention today that I was signing all the recognition of 5, 10, 20, and 30 years of service of, of employees at Clackamas County. I just think it's amazing, you know, that people stay that long. And Mary, by the way, who's, who's been here more than 30 years, thank you for your service, and thank all the employees for their service. We do a recognition lunch. Mary's 30 years was in September. Did you go to the lunch?
No.
Oh. Well, you need to come, so we can recognize you. And the other thing is that this Thursday, I think I have something else, or no, it's one in the future, I think, which is a Diversity Council Learning Luncheon that I want to go to. So, I'm going to need some people to attend, make sure we have enough people at the recognition lunch. Finally, you know, I, I'm sort of a farmer, and we had a chicken that broke its leg.
Glad you used the word "sort of."
I'm sort of a part-time farmer. I have cattle and chicken. We had a chicken that broke its leg, and you know, for me, a chicken's just, you know, a chicken, but my, that's what somebody said. But Danielle actually called a vet to come, and I was happy the chicken didn't get surgery. We, we had to euthanize the chicken, but it was, I, I just thought it was, you know, kind of strange, but anyway, chicken. But I want to also thank all the farmers, you know. Oh, I know one other thing we need to talk about, and probably pretty soon, is about the Aurora Airport. I, I, you know, they're expanding the Aurora Airport. I sat on that planning committee, and when I left, they hadn't adopted the plan. They claim they did. But we just need to find out information. I've asked Greg Leo, who represents Wilsonville, to give us some information. Not that we oppose the Aurora Airport expansion, we're not saying that, but we ought to be provided information, since we are right there. Clackamas County citizens are impacted by that airport, and I haven't heard hardly anything about it. And so, I'm requesting that we perhaps have a policy session here, you know, when we have time, to discuss that, the Aurora Airport. I know Paul knows more about it, and Martha knows about, Ken, and I don't know if you do or not. You do? Okay.
Not, not recent.
No, I haven't either. I haven't heard a thing. But there is some concern. I ran into one of the farmers, who happens to farm, went into the airport, and wanted to know why the county commission hadn't been involved. I said, I haven't heard anything about it, you know, in quite some time. So, with that, we need to go to a lunch, and we got done before 11:00. So, thank you very much for coming today. With that, we're adjourned.